Good evening. Planning Commission meeting of January 22nd will come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary will call roll, please.
Commissioner Tolson.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Mayor.
Here.
Chairperson Mann.
Here. Before we proceed down the agenda, we're going to make a couple of quick changes. First, some of you may or may not know, but our Mayor Fred Thomas passed away. So, we're going to start our meeting with a moment of silence in Fred's behalf. Thank you, one and all. Appreciate it. The second item that we're going to be changing is Item 12A3. The North Canyon Project, also dealing with the annexation. The city is going to request that that be pulled to a date certain of April 9th. So, we will not be hearing anything on that today. However, under public comments, if you wish to speak tonight, you are more than welcome. If you want to delay your public comments until the April 9th meeting, you're free to do that as well. It's certainly your choice. All we ask is that if you do have a statement to make under public comment, fill out one of the green cards and we will call you up. You can speak tonight and again on April 9th, whatever is your pleasure. It's purely up to you, but it was a last-minute decision that the city is going to request that it be pulled to a date certain of April 9th. So, sorry that we did not have that information earlier. So, if you wish to stay, you are more than welcome. If you don't want to say anything under public comments, you can certainly leave without a problem.
And to follow up with that, Chairman Mann, the... We may actually open that public hearing item that could speak under the agenda item.
Okay.
And you may wish, if you choose, is to push that item to the first item, move 12A3 to the first item heard tonight to accelerate that process if the commission desires.
Okay. So, again, just you can either speak on it. We will call it, but we will not be hearing it other than public comments, or you can wait to make your public comments on the 9th if you're available. Or you can certainly make them today. They'll be on the record and we'll have them for the April 9th meeting. So, again, sorry for the inconvenience of having you come out here, but we will not be making a decision on that annexation, i.e. the north...
Northern Canyons.
Northern Canyons project. I'm sorry. There were just too many issues at hand with the city. My understanding is that they weren't prepared to present tonight. 6:30, yeah. April 9th should be a Wednesday. Planning Commission meeting, 6:30. Back here. Okay, moving on. If we do do, we will move it up to item number 12. It'll be the first one on 12.
Yes, we could probably take care of that motion now if the general wants to be relocated per the majority of the commission.
Do we want to do it before election of officers? Just open up 12 now?
I would do it after election of officers and approval minutes. It'd just be the first item.
Got it. Okay, so with that, our first item of business is the election of officers. You have the script, correct?
Yes. Good evening. This is the time and place set for the nomination of election of the Planning Commission Chairperson and Vice Chairperson for 2025. The Simi Valley Municipal Code provides that prior to any vote of the Office of Chairperson, the Deputy Director City Planner myself may take all nominations for the Office of Chairperson. All nominations must receive a second. Anyone receiving a nomination may vote for themselves. The floor is now open for nominations for the Office of Chairperson.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Klingman for the position of Chairperson.
Second.
Christman, sorry. I'm reading the wrong script. I'm sorry.
Okay, for point of clarification, that would be Vice Chair.
Vice Chair.
Mayor.
Chrisman.
Sorry. I'm reading my notes.
We're not adding a new person onto the...
I'm reading off the project.
Under the dais.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, you're taking notes of this?
Okay, and we had a second?
All second.
Sorry. We have two seconds. I hear a third.
Second by Kennedy.
Pick one.
Okay, any other nominations?
Carly want to be chair?
So, for procedural purposes, we'll now poll the Planning Commission on the motion to accept Commissioner Christman as the new Chairperson for 2025. Please go ahead and vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, Chair Christman.
Congratulations, and before we relocate our seats, let's go ahead and take the nomination for Vice Chairperson in the same manner.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Kennedy as Vice Chair.
Second. My microphone was already on. I beat you to it.
Okay, second one, man. Okay, any other nominations?
Okay.
Hearing none, let's go ahead and take a vote on that.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, congratulations. Now, the... New Chairperson and Vice Chairperson can take their spots in the...
Maybe.
Proper seats.
Maybe. Okay, fine.
So, just a moment, we'll rearrange the nameplates so we all know who we're speaking to.
May I make a motion, may I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I motion to approve the agenda. Actually, you know what? Hang on a minute. As I give you my notes, let's move up Item 12A3 to... As soon as we get through the approval of the minutes and the agenda. So, we can open up the public comment section of that, as was discussed.
Okay. Are you making a motion, amended?
Yes.
To move 12?
12A3 to item...
Six? Seven. To the first public hearing.
So, it should be 11A.
11A.
Yes.
Right at the beginning of 12.
Got it.
Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Mann and second by Commissioner Tolson. Call for vote? Oh, oh, we can just go with consensus. Okay, unless there's any objections, the agenda stands approved.
As amended.
Amended. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes. On December 4th, 2024?
Second.
A motion was made by Commissioner Rice and was with a second by Commissioner Tolson. Unless there is any objections, the minutes are approved. The secretary will read the declaration of conflict. Are there... You're going to read it first. This is my first time. It's not actually.
If any member of the Planning Commission may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time.
Are there declarations of conflict? Hearing none? Move on, right? This is the time allotted for public statements or comments on all items other than public hearing items. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to be heard? Go ahead. If you can, if you can come up, state your name and your residence.
Okay, you'll have that opportunity shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard? Is there any correspondence from the Deputy Director City Planner?
Yes, Chairperson Christman and members of the Planning Commission, we received several supplementals. One supplemental on Item 12A1. A second supplemental on 12A1. A supplemental on 12A2. And a supplemental on 12A3. And a supplemental on 13A1 regarding the four hearings tonight. And those have all been provided to you at the dais and are also available to the public.
Okay. So, we're going to go to the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll go to 12A3.
12A3, oh. Okay, thank you. Okay. Do I read the whole thing?
Yes.
Now, we're on to the public hearing. PDS-S-1054, NAX-007, NAX-2024-0001, GPA-0073, ZS-0613, ZS-2024-0005, and TT-5658A. SVGV Partners LLC to consider an annexation, NAX-77, General Plan Amendment, GPA-73, Zone Change, ZS-0613, Plan Development Permit, PDS-1054, and Tentative Map, TT-5658A, to annex and subdivide an approximately 160.32 acre site for a 207-unit residential development considering about 157 single-family residences, 50 multifamily units, and open space located between the northern terminus of First Street and the intersection Arundel Road and Falcon Street. An annexation of County Island Properties, NAX-2024-0001, associated pre-zonings, ZS-2024-0005, and intend to adopt the Environmental Impact Report and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program for the project. Are there any expertise communications to report? Since we're not going to do an oral report on this matter, can I open it for public hearing?
Actually, I'll just say a couple of words.
Okay. May I have an oral report on this matter by staff?
Yes, Chairman Christman and members of the Planning Commission. Staff is recommending a continuance to a date certain for this project. Staff has identified some issues that warrant a continuance of this matter, and we're recommending a date certain to April 9th, 2025, to address those concerns. And the applicant has been aware of this request. We would also, like Commissioner Mann said earlier, if any members of the public wish to speak tonight on this item, we have their speaker cards and we will call out those names. You have the opportunity to speak tonight, particularly if you may not be available April 9th. But you could state your concerns or your comments. So, if concurrence by the commission, that'd be my suggested action.
We will open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Would... No, applicant's not going to speak, right?
Right.
Are there... I'm sorry, I'm trying to kind of get to the... To the point where we have... Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to be heard on this matter? And I can read the cards. Emily Walker. David Mosso. Good evening.
Mission, and good evening, city staff. David Mosso, 44-year resident, Simi Valley District 1. I'm initially against full annexation of all the island communities. I just would like to bring forth some questions and/or concerns. I'd like to inquire, are there development projects slated for all of these islands that would be listed in this annexation? And it's my understanding annexation cannot be forced. It must require consent. And if forcing annexation can be done to encompass all the island communities within Simi Valley's sphere of influence, please provide the California law and the section specific, if you don't mind. Is there any reason annexation can't be addressed at the time of each and/or any development project within each single annexation? Or is there a reason that it must be done and encompassed entirely? How does the tax revenue change if an island community is annexed? And how that affects the tax revenue to the city? And does the annexation count as homes being added under the California requirements or state requirements? So, in other words, if these are existing homes within these annexed islands, by annexing them, does that count as you added homes when we really didn't add homes? They were already existing, but they were within our community. And is there any concerns with any of the island communities drinking water? That is of any specific attention here? And is it not meeting criteria? Is that one of the reasons maybe that we're looking at some of the annexations? And is there any disadvantages to the annexations if they're sought at the time of any future developments? In other words, we know that Project North Ranch is an active one that's looking to move forward within, I guess, an annexed community or wish to be annexed community. If that only annexation for that one sector is annexed and we can do the others later, is there any disadvantage to that to the city, cost, financial, you know, development or whatnot? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jan Lea. Maybe I'm pronouncing it wrong.
Good evening. I just wanted to express, I know all of you are elected officials and represent the city of Simi Valley, but unfortunately, it doesn't represent the people who are actually going to be affected by this, which is we're all part of Ventura County, and you would be annexing us. We didn't request the annexation. A developer did. And I would just like to express that I hope that in making a decision that you would put consideration to how we feel about being annexed. I know there's people that are going to speak either tonight or later on why they do not approve, but it's, in essence, we're being... And we're not being represented, even though we have a voice in government and should. We're not getting that voice because all we can do is come here, but there's been no vote or no... No, nothing has been done to see if us, we who are being affected, really want this annexation. And there are a lot of things that it will change, and people moved into that area of the city, yet we abide by your laws and anything that we have to. But they moved there for a certain reason. They purchased properties in those areas because they weren't part of the city and not part of the city laws. And a lot of them have to do with animals and so forth. But I would hope that somehow we would be polled or looked at and seen what our consideration is. And I would wonder why it wasn't... If we didn't ask for it, why it would be forced upon us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Dag. Can you please come up and state your name and residence, city of residence? Jamie Dag. D-A-G-G. That's how I read it. Next one is David, Dave Hardy.
I opted not to speak tonight. I did attack your memo.
Oh. Yeah, you did. I'm sorry. Mary Erle is also in opposition, and she doesn't want to speak as well. Matt Bancroft. Matt Bancroft. Jody Bancroft. I'm guessing they're together. Boney Canfield. She does not want to speak, but is in opposition. Mike Jones is in opposition and doesn't want to speak. Constantino Claricio is in opposition and doesn't want to speak. Cecilia Jones is in opposition and doesn't want to speak. Vern Orth. Vern Orth. Vern Orth, Vern Orth. Sheila Kuntz. Joshua Galvin. Be a three, Be a Trees. Goren Garren. Sorry.
It's just Gutai, I live in Simi Valley here. We live in Big Sky Canyon, Big Sky Country, and so just, the issue is that Falcon is going to be more of a thoroughfare that's going to be opening up all the way to First Street, so we're just very concerned of the traffic that's going to be impacting in that area since right now it's a very quiet area. Also, we are interested to find out if the bus is going to be going through that street. We prefer that, no, we don't, we don't have that because it's going to bring, again, we're already leading with a lot of crime in the area of Simi Valley recently. We got robbed not too long ago, so we are very concerned about the increased traffic that's going to be generated and just the movement in the area. Right now, it's totally quiet, and there's nobody there because the street does not go through, so we'd like to get some answers in more detail of how the impact of traffic is going to affect the area. We also think that because people may use that area to go all the way through, through First Street, they might come through our street, which is right adjacent to Falcon, which is Milestone, so we think that people coming through Arranger, through Lost Canyons are going to be kicking our street, so that's going to be a generation of increased traffic. And so what plans do you have so that that does not happen? Are there street bumps? Will you put gates up? What is it, what are you going to be doing so that it doesn't disturb our quality of life? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is, I'm going to butcher this, Arpad Gutsy.
Same, I'm her husband, so. First of all, I wanted to let you know how sad we are that Fred passed away. That was very, very sad. On the other side, I'm curious as to why the development that is being planned back there is being commingled with the annexation of these islands. To me, those are two separate issues. They need to be separated. I'm hearing different things, but that's what I'd like to understand, is why that's being done. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to try and call those people again. Was, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? With that, I would close the public comments, or not? You don't want to close? If there's no further question, we will close the public.
Madam Chair, I think the correct motion would be to continue the public hearing to April ninth, twenty twenty five. The hearing will remain open until that time, and you can gather additional evidence at that point.
Yes, and I just, if I could say a couple items to respond. So, thank you for everyone coming out to speak tonight. These comments and questions were very helpful, and in light of the item being continued, we are going to prepare a written response to these comments and provide that at the next meeting. In the interim, if any of you would like to reach out to myself or the Planning Department to get some, try to get some answers before that, our doors are open. You could contact myself or Elizabeth directly to follow up on those questions to get a sooner response, and it might provide some additional information that you could work with in the interim. So we are available for that. So I'm putting it out there.
Thank you, Sean. May I have the motion to continue the hearing to April eighth, ninth, twenty twenty five?
I motion to continue the hearing on item twelve A three two, date certain of April ninth, twenty twenty five.
May I have the second?
Second.
With motion made by Chairperson Mann and second by Commissioner Lee, oh, you're not a chairperson anymore?
No, I'm the commissioner now.
Oh. I upgraded you. And second by Commissioner Lee. What did I do? Call for vote? Oh, with a consensus, that's how we're going to do. With a consensus, we're going to continue the hearing to April ninth, twenty twenty five on item twelve three. Okay. My next public, do we just continue with the regular? I'm going to be more prepared the next. This is the time and place set for a public hearing on the consideration of C U P S twenty twenty three zero 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 four and a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program thereof. Are there any expertise communication to report? May we have an oral report on this matter by staff?
Yes, Chairperson Chrisman. This is the continued public hearing to consider a new sixty-six thousand square foot industrial building and manufacturing business in our west end area at six fifteen West Los Angeles Avenue. It was continued back from August for comments received, and staff is recommending, recommended approval. We provided a couple supplemental reports on this matter. And to present the project is Associate Planner Alex Klingman.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. The applicant Walter Postaway with PAC Group requests approval of a conditional use permit to construct a sixty-six thousand four hundred thirty-one square foot industrial tilt-up building for warehousing and manufacturing of bakery ingredients on a seven point six seven acre vacant site and the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. Due to a lack of quorum at the August seventh Planning Commission meeting, it was canceled and the planning, excuse me, the public hearing for the project was continued to the following meeting on August twenty first. However, to allow staff more time to address the environmental concerns and comments received, the hearing was continued and re-noticed ahead of tonight's meeting. The project is located at six one five West Los Angeles Avenue and is surrounded by a railroad and vacant land to the north, West Los Angeles Avenue and city facilities to the south, Alamos Creek and a recently approved industrial development to the west, and vacant land for industrial development to the east. The proposed building will include an approximately thirty-eight thousand five hundred square foot warehouse space, a twenty-one thousand square foot manufacturing area, and a six thousand six hundred square foot office and mezzanine. The facility will be staffed with forty-six office and warehouse employees, and there will be a total of ninety-one parking spaces for both public and employee use located on the west and east sides of the building. Two new driveways will be constructed from West Los Angeles to access the parking areas and the four loading docks on each side of the building. Construction of the project will require approximately thirty thousand cubic yards of excavation and nineteen thousand cubic yards of fill. Project improvements will remain at least one hundred feet away from the top of the bank of Alamos Creek to the west. The top of the bank is shown here in green, and the one hundred foot buffer is outlined in blue. The project will provide approximately sixty-one thousand nine hundred square feet of landscaping, which complies with the west end specific plan requirement of fifteen percent. Five coast live oaks and two Peruvian pepper trees will be removed from the site to accommodate the proposed project. To mitigate the loss of these trees, the applicant is required to plant replacement trees on site or pay into the city's tree mitigation fund. Oak trees will need to be mitigated at a ratio of three to one to comply with the west end specific plan. A seventy-seven foot long and fifteen foot high concrete tilt-up wall will also be provided on the west side of the building to screen the loading docks from view on West Los Angeles Avenue. The loading docks located on the east side of the building will be screened by the building wall and landscaping. A landscape buffer area will screen the south and west portions of the building along West Los Angeles Avenue through the use of trees, shrubs, and ground cover, and the east portion of the site will be screened by a landscaped berm as shown here on the slide. The proposed building will be forty-four feet and three inches in height, which complies with the forty-eight foot maximum height allowed by the west end specific plan. The exterior of the building will consist of concrete tilt-up walls in varying shades of gray with copper-colored tile and corrugated metal siding accents, and building entries will be emphasized with bronze aluminum framing, and windows will be dual glazed with a green tint. Metal awnings will be provided over windows and loading docks, and all roof-mounted equipment will be completely screened by an eight-foot-high parapet wall. Lastly, retaining walls ranging from one foot to six and a half feet in height will be constructed along the south and west edges of the parking area and building. Landscaping will be provided in front of the walls to soften their appearance. As shown on this table and detailed on page six of the staff report, the proposed structure meets the height, setbacks, landscaping, off-street parking, and loading requirements of the development code and the west end specific plan. An initial study was prepared for the project in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Based on the conclusions of the initial study, it was determined that the project would not have any potential significant environmental impacts with the incorporation of seventeen mitigation measures, which are provided as Exhibit D of the report. Therefore, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project and was available for a thirty-day public review period from July eighth through August seventh. Following this review period, a total of eleven comment letters were received, primarily related to the biology and air quality sections of the I S M and D. The comment letters are included in Exhibit seven of the report. In response to the comment letters received, the applicant's consultants reviewed the project and the environmental studies and provided a comprehensive response to comments, also included in Exhibit seven. The city's consultant and city staff also reviewed these responses and concurred with the conclusion that no avoidable significant effects have been identified, and no new mitigation measures or project revisions are required to reduce potential impacts of the project. Minor revisions were made to the project's conditions, I S M and D, and mitigation measures for clarity and were provided in Exhibit five. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider a resolution approving the proposed conditional use permit and the project's mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Also, a late letter was received from Mitchell M. Si Law Firm, and the comments received were determined to not affect the adequacy of the I S M and D, and responses to these comments were provided to you as a second supplemental report. And this concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Any questions of staff?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Kling, I mean, sorry, Ms. Klingman. Do we know the projected hours of operation? Or should we just wait for the applicant to answer that question?
The applicant can speak on that.
Okay, and then another question, just because I'm ignorant of this. Do you know what a incidental take permit is? It has to do if they find a crotches bumblebee or one of those other things. I looked it up, but I still didn't understand what it was.
It's basically an authorization from the Fish and Wildlife, Department of Fish and Wildlife to take that species, basically to.
Is it to relocate it or what? Or just take it?
Yeah, to take it.
Okay.
They may require relocation, they may require mitigation.
Decide what to do with it?
They provide, so it's a separate permit, so Fish and Wildlife will provide their conditions at that time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? During none, we will open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Thank you. Would the applicant like to present a project? Can you please state your name?
My name is Brian Poliquin, I'm with PK Architecture, we're the architect for the project, and we're here with also our consultants. We have environmental consultants, landscape architect, civil engineer, and us. If you guys have any questions about the project, this is Walt Postaway. He is the client, and he might have a few words about the operation, because she just asked some questions about the hours of operation.
Hi, Walt Postaway with PAC Group, President for North America. To answer your question regarding our operating hours, intended operating hours for the office space will only be one shift, probably seven AM to about five or six PM. Manufacturing, which will be a much lighter employee workload, might go to the second or third shift, but that would not be at least for the first two to three years. If we get the business to where we want to, yes, we would have a second, possibly a third shift, but it would be very light, it'd be very low number of employees working those shifts.
Okay, so if you had a third shift, let's say you're super successful, okay? You have a third shift, and you're saying your third shift would be really light, in other words, is what you're telling me?
Yes, both the second and third will be light. All shipping would have to be done during.
During regular business hours. Okay, that's kind of where I was going with this whole thing anyway, so.
Yeah, I would not, I wouldn't expect it to impact traffic at all.
Okay, all right, thank you. Oh, I had one other question, can I ask? Well, is he going to present the project or?
Are you going to present your project or?
Well, I think Alexandra presented it pretty well. There's not a whole lot to add to, to it, but we are here to answer any questions. I have Liam Newman, the landscape architect, if you wanted to talk about oak trees, landscape and such. We have the environmental consultants that dealt with some of the environmental questions and responded back fairly rigorously on that. We have our civil engineer, if you had any questions about the grade and grades, stormwater, anything like that, but I think Alexandra did a pretty good job of presenting the project, so. If there's any questions you have about the elevations, but I think she talked about the materials that we were using, she addressed the height of the building, that were within the requirements of the city. We screened all the trucking. We, I think we have quality landscaping around the project, we had to deal with the railroad behind, this was a fairly complicated project from a planning point of view to deal with, and we're grateful for the Planning Department to help us get through this and be here today, so we thank you for hearing this now. So, but if you have any questions, we have a whole bunch of people here that can answer anything that you need to ask.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Chairperson can ask, and one more question, okay. I noticed in our letters that you had a number of letters from like the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and Mountains Recreation and Conservancy, and they referenced a certain amount of open space, but yet this project, as it's presented to us, has more open space than what they're referencing. Did you change the amount of open space?
No.
Since those letters or?
No, nothing's been.
Because they keep referencing a different amount than what you have, and it, and they keep referencing one amount, and your amount is, seems to be about two acres more than what they reference?
I, I mean, our plans haven't changed.
Okay.
I mean, those letters came along after pretty much most of the project was fairly well-developed, and the Planning Department had reviewed the project thoroughly, so nothing's changed. There is a fair, a large open space, kind of almost like a semi-wetlands on the one side.
It's a big difference, and it just seemed kind of strange to me.
And these are all, it's all been calculated by our civil engineer and. And these are all-- it's all been calculated by our civil engineer, and I think the numbers are all accurate, so--
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Anybody else?
Yeah, can I get a-- maybe from Mr. Postlewate, the-- just the nature of the business and who your customers are, service?
Sure. We're a food ingredient manufacturer. We're owned by a company. It's a global company based in Turkey, but we run the North American division. Right now, we're headquartered in Pasadena. We use third parties to do our manufacturing right now, so it's what, co-packing or toll processing. We're trying to get that under all of our one roof, and that's what this facility is for. Basically, the manufacturing will be dry blending of bakery ingredients. So we sell ingredients that go into industrial baking, Dave's Killer Bread, some of the consumer products you'll see on the store shelves here in any of your major stores, outlets, and that's what we'll be manufacturing. So it's large industrial manufacturing for dry blending.
What is the timeline for your project for development and--
As fast as we can move forward. We're growing at a pretty good clip right now, and we'd like to get into this facility as quickly as we can. We'll need to hire anywhere from ten to probably twenty-five people initially, just to open the doors, and we're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
As far as timeline, you're probably looking at three months or so for construction docks, three to four months for construction drawings, four months probably for plan check, and then it's probably a nine-to-ten-month build for construction. So that roughly would be the timeframe.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to be heard on this matter? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pedro Toscano.
Hello, good evening, Commissioners. Let me open up my notes. Thank you very much for--
Can you please state your name and your city of residence?
Yes. Pedro Toscano. I'm a member of the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. I live locally, near the area of this construction project, and I recreate around it, too. There's a campsite right around the ways there, and I put my family up on my camper truck when they come into town, so-- I believe I will be impacted by the environmental impacts of the project. The city should require the project to be built with contractors that will hire locally, pay prevailing wage, and utilize apprentices from a certified apprenticeship program. With that, I would like to point out that Simi Valley, most of us have our kids, you know, that go to the high school there. They just implemented an MOU with the carpenters to implement our curriculum there. They have a CTE program, Construction Training of Education, and none of these kids have ever worked locally. They all work far, because developers bring their own construction from elsewhere. Workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting local economy and workforce development. In a recent 2020 report titled "Putting California on the High Roads: A Jobs Climate Action for 2030," the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upscaling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. The South Coast Air Quality Management District recently found that local hire requirements can result in air pollution reductions. Recently, the state of California reiterated its commitment towards encouraging workforce development and housing affordability through the Affordable Housing High Roads Job Act of 2022, otherwise known as Assembly Bill 2011, which requires projects to pay workers a prevailing wage and hire from state-certified apprenticeship programs for projects meeting certain city affordability and development standards. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chase Brasiato.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Chase Brasiato, and I represent SAFER, the Supporters of Hawaiians for Environmental Responsibility and its members living, working, and recreating in and around the city of Simi Valley. SAFER has reviewed the Simi PAC project and believed that it is improper to proceed with a mitigated negative declaration. We respectfully urge the city not to adopt the MND and to instead prepare an environmental impact report. With the limited time I have this evening, I would like to highlight a couple reasons why. First, CEQA prohibits the use of an MND if there is substantial evidence of a fair argument that the project may have an adverse effect on biological resources, such as special status species, wildlife movement, and habitat loss. SAFER retained expert ecologist Dr. Sean Smallwood. During a site visit performed by his associate, numerous wildlife species were identified on or around the project site, including several special status species. These findings reinforce his conclusions that the project will adversely impact how wildlife currently move throughout and inhabit the project site. These findings also complement the biological resource reports prepared for this project, which not only also identified a special status species on or near the project site, but also identified a federally endangered species, the Leesbells Vireo, near the site. As Dr. Smallwood notes, however, the MND fails to adequately assess these concerns or provide efficient mitigation measures to reduce the project's impacts to a level below significant thresholds. Additionally, LEESBells prohibits the use of an MND if there is substantial evidence of a fair argument that the project may have an adverse effect on air quality. SAFER retained Dr. Clark of Clark &amp; Associates to review the project and concluded that not only are some conclusions reached in the MND not supported by substantial evidence, but that the project may violate the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District's guidelines related to odor impacts and nuisance as long as a result of the project's operations. Additionally, given the recent news about valley fever and the high occurrence of cases in the region, the MND must provide more adequate safeguards to protect those at or near the project site during construction. For the foregoing reasons, SAFER respectfully requests the planning commission not approve the MND and prepare a more adequate analysis of the project's impacts in an EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard? Are there any comments from staff regarding statements made during the public hearing?
Yes. I'll start backwards. I'll start with air quality. Comments raised on air quality regarding odor impacts. We did have an air quality report prepared for the project, and we did analyze odors for the project, and it was determined that dry blending ingredients with no type of heating or cooking or organic solvents would result in little to none odor generation. Odor generation's unlikely for this type of project. The building's also designed with ventilation systems that have to be approved by the city and the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District. They also did provide comments on the initial study and MND and didn't determine any odor impacts for that. Regarding valley fever, standard construction practices and control measures are required under Rule 55 to minimize the risks of valley fever. Health risks to construction workers and exposure to valley fever are not effects that are considered CEQA issues. Rather, they're related to work safety, so they were not analyzed in the environmental impact analysis. Regarding the biological issues raised, the Leesbells Vireo was studied in the biology report for the project, and it was determined that they would have-- they would not be present at this project site. However, there were mitigation measures incorporated, that if by chance any of them were, there would have to be pre-construction surveys to occur to determine that. If anything was found, construction would have to halt and be reported to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as well. There's also mitigation that requires the project to remain at least a hundred feet away from that Alamos Creek buffer, and that would apply to that section. I believe that addresses all of the concerns. Thank you.
Maybe one more comment from staff?
Wildlife movement was also brought up in the comments, and we just want to show one slide with regard to that. So the main wildlife corridor here is Alamos Creek, and the 100-foot buffer you can see is the blue line, and you can see the different field mods around the proposed building. And the field mod that the fire department requires does not extend into the Alamos Creek area. As such, the main wildlife corridor that-- the habitat that wildlife uses to move from north to south will not be affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments regarding statements made during the public hearing?
We have our environmental consultant here to address these concerns as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amber Heredia. I'm with SOMIS, and we prepared the biological report. I just wanted to clarify Alexandra already explained, answered the questions, but I just wanted to explain a little bit more. We did all of the required surveys, which we did a focus survey for California natch catchers. We did special sets plant surveys, and we did a focus survey for Crotches Bumblebee. And the area along the creek is the habitat that if it were more well-developed, it would be potential habitat for Leesbells Vireo. But it's not-- it doesn't have much understory habitat. It has some of the riparian habitat features, but it's not enough to be occupied by Leesbells Vireo. That could change over time. When we were out doing the survey for Crotches Bumblebee, the biologist is very well-qualified to also do bird surveys, and he heard a Leesbells Vireo on the other side of the railroad tracks, which is a much bigger, well-developed riparian forest. And so he recorded it and reported it as were required to by our permits into the California Natural Diversity Database. There is a requirement to do a pre-construction nesting bird survey. So before construction starts, there would be a nesting bird survey to make sure there's no nesting birds of any kind, common or special status, that would be impacted by vegetation clearing. And if at that time there were a Leesbells Vireo along the creek, then there would be a protective buffer placed around that nest so that it wouldn't be affected by the construction activities, and the habitat would not be taken because it's in the creek area that is not going to be impacted by the project. He also brought up the wildlife corridor, and as staff explained, the creek is going to remain, so that corridor will still be open. It is a constrained, like, kind of narrow linkage for wildlife, but that's just sort of the nature of-- it's already in a fragmented area, and the habitat's going to remain there even after the project. We also, in some of our responses, showed where the lighting would be, and that the vegetation would screen some of the lighting from the development, so that should help reduce the indirect impacts on the creek. I think that's everything that he mentioned. Were there any other questions about the biology?
No, thank you.
All right.
Hi, my name's Tim Rosenstein. I wrote the air quality report for the project, and I just want to say that the-- our response to comments is, you know, pretty comprehensive, and I would just refer you to that. The basic thing is the comment letter doesn't provide any substantial evidence of a fair argument. Like, nothing in the letter rises to the threshold of substantial evidence. It's all just, you know, conjecture and-- statements without supporting facts. Valley fever, the project is required to follow Rule 55, which is taking care of dust being tracked out of the site, watering down disturbed sites, covering up stored soil, things like that. Those are literally the measures that the Air Pollution Control District says you should implement to control valley fever. And just to add to something that wasn't in the response to comments letter, I didn't realize at the time, Rule 55, the Air Pollution Control District's guidelines have two different sections about controlling dust. And I mentioned this in the letter, Rule 55 came after those guidelines. So Rule 55 takes the previous recommendations and the guidelines and puts it all in one document. So that is the one and only thing that the Air Pollution Control District recommends that you do for valley fever, is implement Rule 55. And then the-- probably the biggest issue is there are no sensitive receptors within a distance of the facility that would be impacted by any sort of construction emissions. The nearest sensitive receptors are more than half a mile away, and simply you are not going to get a significant impact when you're following all the rules with diesel particulate or dust or anything like that. And then-- and then anything having to do with operations, that's all a matter of regulatory compliance that's taken care of by the building code, is taken care of by state law. There's-- and again, this is all to say that there's no substantial evidence that there would be any significant impact. And so our response is basically just to explain what control measures are out there and what the regulatory environment is, because it really takes care of it. Yeah.
Yeah, just if you could kind of clarify, I was gonna bring it up, but since you're up here. On the-- it said the Cal E-mod version that you guys were using was outdated, and there was some discussion about whether those levels changed in that version control. Can you kind of clarify that?
Yeah. At the time, the 2022 version of Cal E-mod was new. It was kind of a beta version that had been out for, you know, not very long. And in no jurisdictions were requesting the use of it yet. We contacted the Air Pollution Control District and asked them, should we be using the 2022 version? And they said, we don't use it. We don't recommend, you know, projects their lead agency for use it because it has bugs in it. So we stuck with the 2020 version. And there's no refinements to the 2022 version that makes it significantly more accurate. Really, mostly what happens with the 2022 version is there-- I mean, there are some refinements in that vein, but mostly it's just an update of all the data that the program pulls from. And so actually, you'll see if you-- because I've run a 2020 and subsequently a 2022 Cal E-mod on the same project, you'll actually see the 2022 output is usually lower. Like, most everything is usually lower. Particulate matter tends to be about the same as the previous, but everything's lower because it's pulling from updated vehicle emissions profiles. It's pulling from updated energy providers, how they're producing their energy. You know, they're getting away from fossil fuels and doing more wind energy and things like that. So on a-- just on a is it adequate matter? Yes, the air district, who is the authority on what makes a good, you know, air quality review in the district, said use 2020. So it is adequate for CEQA. And then just simply, logistically, there's nothing built into the 2020 version that would make, when you run them back-to-back, that would make it superior in any way. It's not. It's updated, but it's not-- it's not a better-- it's not a-- easier to use. I like it better, but it's not. From a CEQA perspective, there's, you know, very little difference.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant? I have a question for the applicant. I'm sorry, I'm making you walk in your steps.
Do you have a question for me or for Walter?
I have a question, one question. Are there any plans to hire local labor force?
More than likely, we'd hire local contractors. That's the, you know, we don't really have control over the labor and how it's used. Different contractors operate different ways. But it'll be a commercial contractor that's able to build a building of this sort. We don't know which one yet, but it would more than likely be a local one.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I don't think I should name a few right now, but we have a few that we've mentioned. But yeah, they're all local, they're all in the Ventura County area, Thousand Oaks, so.
Thank you. More questions for the applicant? Thank you, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Are there any comments or questions from members of the planning commission?
Sure. I can do that. You know, at first, when I looked at this, I got really confused because a number of different things just kind of jumped out at me, and I was really confused. But then we got a chance to look at it again. And, you know, I get all these letters, there were so many letters, and about air quality and biological resources, and this bird and that bird, and anyway, so, anyway. And then the numbers didn't match up, and, you know, the number of acres didn't match up, and then I had to look at it on a map, and I had to drive out there and look at it. And then I realized that actually, that Alamos Creek actually was not cut off, you know, no matter what it looks like, you know, here, or the maps that were provided by some of the people who wrote, who sent things in, their maps were incorrect. And that really kind of changed things. So, and the fact that there are other animal pathways just above it and below it, that kind of helped too, which are not on your maps, by the way. Sorry. Anyway, the air quality information, which blew my, exploded my brain, but yeah, I'm satisfied with that information after going through as much as I can. And I'm satisfied with the biological information. I think that the applicant did a stellar job explaining and responding to the criticism from those different organizations. I'm happy with the parking. I think the parking meets the requirements of it. I think that the city's done its due diligence when it comes to this. I like the fact that there's four-sided architecture on this building. I like the colors. The landscaping is good. I like, I'm really happy, especially at the moment, with the fuel modification zone that there's, you know, that, you know, especially in that zone right there, which is a high-fire danger zone, that fuel modification zone, it has to be at least 100 feet away from the building. That's fantastic, that's good. Okay, and, I don't know, there's something else in here somewhere, but, anyway. But I think overall, this is a good project. I had issues at first, but I found answers in there, and I think that that's because of the applicant and the applicant's staff. And, I mean, six trees that the applicant is removing, and that's $153,500, that they're going to have to either upsize the other trees they have on-site, or they're going to give to the city's fund to replace somewhere else in the city. That's a lot. Okay, that's all I really have.
Thank you. Commissioner Dolan?
Just not much more than what's already been said. I think the use of the property is going to be fantastic for our city. The concerns were addressed significantly appropriately by the applicant, and the presentation by Ms. Klingman was fantastic, and I'm 100% behind this project.
Anybody else?
A couple of questions of staff. Roadway, ingress and egress for trucks entering east and westbound LA Avenue. Is there a center turn lane? Is there, what is the roadway going to be for these trucks entering and exiting these driveways?
I'll defer to the city traffic engineer for that.
I knew I was here for a reason. Sorry. Good evening, Commissioner Mann, yes. So one of the requirements when we were doing our due diligence on the project was to have the applicant do a truck turning analysis to make sure that they could get their trucks on and off-site. So I believe it's in the plan set somewhere, but yes, we did ask them to do a truck turn analysis to make sure that the trucks could enter on-site, traverse the site, exit the site. There is a center two-way left turn lane on West LA Avenue. I believe that widening was done a few years back, but that would also accommodate the truck turn movements if they're unable to make that turn from the through lane.
Now, when they're turning out of the driveway onto LA Avenue, is there a lane for them to get up to speed, or are they right in the traffic lane, and a car coming behind them is going to be stopped until the truck gets up to speed?
No, they can turn into the two-way left turn lane, the center two-way left turn lane, and the driveway is as an acceleration lane, so they can make a two-stage, we call it a two-stage gap. So make the turn in the left turn lane so that you're not inhibiting the through traffic whether you're turning. They can only go eastbound technically, because when you get to Arroyo Avenue, trucks over two tons are not allowed to be there, I believe, or it's a five-ton limit, something like that. So they can only enter in from the east and then exit and head east as well.
Okay.
But they can either enter the site, because the loading bays are on both sides of the building, they can either enter the site on the western driveway and then come through that way to get to the easternmost loading bays, or enter in on the east side of the building to get to the westernmost loading bays. And then again, exit the building into that left turn lane and then move into the stream of traffic.
Got it. Thank you very much. That was it?
Oh, wait, I got a question, if you don't mind, real quick.
Absolutely.
So I noticed it's kind of on a corner there. Are there any adjustments to speed for visibility coming around through a corner with the trucks exiting? I mean...
Actually, in this case, no, and the design of the building reflects that, because in one of the iterations, the design iterations, we actually had them change the design of the building so that we did have adequate site distance looking to the east. So that's why it cuts off on that diagonal in that direction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any comments? Any comments?
No.
I would like to say that I really like the aesthetics of this building, and I had like a million notes. I was not, I was one of the lucky ones to make that not a quorum for you, because I was out of country. So I never got to review this project before, but I really liked that we're going to give opportunity for more employment in the city, and maybe even with construction. And I like the lights adjustments, I really appreciate that. That's all for me.
May I please have a reading of the resolution?
Resolution number SVPC 02-2025. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley approving conditional use permit, CUPS 2023 0004, and adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program to construct a 66,431-square-foot industrial tilt-up building on a 7.67-acre vacant site located at 615 West Los Angeles Avenue.
Thank you. The chair will now entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution approving CUPS 2003 0004, a mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring plan.
A motion was made by Commissioner Rice. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Call for vote. Motion passes unanimously. The appeal period for the conditional use permit is 14 calendar days. Proceed to the next slide. This is the time and place set for a continued public hearing of the consideration of CUPS 2023 0011 and the determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Are there any ex parte communications to report? May I have an oral report on this matter by staff?
Yes, Chairman Chrisman, this is, again, a continued public hearing. It was continued twice for quorum reasons and concerns raised. And it is a request to construct a 24,290-square-foot industrial building with accompanying outdoor storage. Our associate planner, Zerouche Parian, will have the rest of the presentation.
The applicant, Michael Lowman of Coolit Rentals, requests approval of a conditional use permit to construct a 24,290-square-foot tilt-up building for industrial and office use, accompanied by 87,117 square feet of outdoor storage on a 3.84-acre site, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Due to a lack of quorum on the December 18, 2024, and January 8, 2025 meetings, the planning commission meetings were canceled, and the public hearing for the project was continued to tonight's meeting. The subject parcel is, the subject property is located in the west end specific plan. Presently, the subject property highlighted in blue is vacant. The property, the proposed building is for the manufacturing, warehousing, and storage of Coolit Rentals' storage units. Existing manufacturing, industrial, and office uses surround the site to the south and west. To the east is the Simi Valley Chevrolet dealership, and to the north is the 118 freeway. The property is accessible from Cochrane Street via two access easement driveways, the eastern and western easements, highlighted in yellow. The easements extend from the subject property over to the two southerly properties until they connect to Cochrane Street. Some improvements will be made within the access easements, including paving, restriping of parking, and landscaping. Improvements in the eastern easement include minor work over the adjacent southern parcel. The property is fairly flat and slopes up to the 118 freeway along the north, where trees line the property boundary. The site will be accessible via two access easements along the west and the east side. The western access easement is shared with the property owner to the west. The project will have parking spaces located on the southwest and north sides of the building. The open storage area will be paved concrete. Fencing and a landscape buffer along the northern and eastern property lines will screen the building and open storage from the 118 freeway and neighboring lot to the east. A six-foot-tall wrought iron fence with fine screening will run along the southern property line that will screen the open storage from the neighboring lot to the south. The proposed building will screen the storage from the neighbor to the west. The project will provide over 26,000 square feet of landscaping. As shown on screen, the proposed project meets the height, setback, parking, and landscaping requirements of the Development Code and West End Specific Plan. Staff will impose special condition A17 as provided in the supplemental staff report. The future sign depicted on the site plan is not a part of this approval. All project signage is subject to future review and approval as defined in the Simi Valley Municipal Code. The condition is being added to clarify that the depiction of the future sign on the project's site plan was not analyzed by staff, as signs are normally reviewed at a ministerial level under the provisions of the municipal code. The southern elevation is the portion of the building that will be the most visible coming in from the western access easement. The building is surrounded by parking along the southwest and north. As you'll see throughout, the design incorporates articulation along the building's facade via wall indentations and use of different colors, such as grays, blues, and white tones, and different materials, such as concrete, metal, and glass. Shown on screen is the west elevation, as would be seen from the neighboring industrial complex to the west. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the proposed conditional use permit, CUP-S-2023-0011, and a determination that the project is exempt from CEQA. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff?
I do. It talks about Phase One, is the tenant or the applicant using the property for themselves, and then down the road, potentially having six different tenants in there. Is the parking adequate for Phase Two if you had six different tenants in there?
Yes, parking was analyzed for the proposed floor plan that was shown on, that is shown on screen right here.
Any other questions of staff? We will open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Would the applicant like to present the project? Thank you. Mike Lowman.
Back again. I'm Brian Poliquin with PK Architecture. We're the architects for the project. Anyhow, I think the same thing. I think, you know, obviously, the project plans and the project elevations and such have been presented quite well. If you guys have any questions about the architecture, and this is Mike Lowman, our client, he runs the business, and if you have some questions about the business itself, he's here to answer those as well.
Are there any questions for the applicant? I would like to ask John's question that he just asked, if there's any plans for who the possible tenants would be, to just continue to your question.
Well, one of the main tenants...
In regards to if that would require any significant more parking than...
I don't think so. I think the, it's fairly similar to the project below, Dick Darling's project, which you guys approved, I don't know, what, five years ago or four years ago? And it was built, I think it was received quite well. This is similar building, similar style, smaller building. That was two buildings back-to-back, this is a single building. And a portion of it, how many square, is it 10,000 square feet that you're utilizing for the business?
Yeah, I was going to say, the current drawing up there showed six bays, and, because we were going to take, you know, one bay. Could you show that real quick? The one where it's all, you know, identified in the condos? Okay, right. So this was the original plan, but our business is growing, and so we've already decided that that whole back part will be ours now. So we've expanded to that, and the objective for this is to pretty much expand into the whole entire building over time, as our business grows. And it's going pretty fast, because, like I said, it wasn't too long ago that we identified, you know, five different clients that might come in here to help us as we grow, but now we've already taken up the whole back part there, Unit D and C, you know.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
We kind of continued this last time because there were some questions over the easement access and how that all played out with the, I believe, parcel number one?
I'm sorry?
With the parcel, the adjacent parcel, and the easement access along that side.
Yeah, we've had discussions, we've gone back and forth. I'm sure, I think they're going to have, you know, their day here. The bottom line is that we have two different versions. We've tried to negotiate with them a little bit, and it was mostly, on today's call, anyway, it was, what I understand, was the landscaping and the sign were the two identified things. And we tried to, you know, work that out today. We weren't able to do that, because I think there was other things that weren't mentioned in the meeting today, and you'll hear from them.
Okay.
But I think one point, I was talking to the civil engineer, and if you look at the language on the track map... Scott, maybe come up. The track map says, it's a reciprocal easement for the use of both parts.
The track map says the, it's a reciprocal easement for the use of both parties. And all as Mike is doing is basically taking care, he's willing to take care of the easement. We were gonna landscape the easement per city requirements, and/or, gee, if they don't want to change the landscape, we won't change the landscape. But the statement, which, Scott, you can explain-
Madam Chair, if I could just intervene. The Planning Commission is not the forum for deciding your private property rights. So the applicant has asserted that he has property rights. We're processing the land use application based upon that understanding. I understand there's a dispute between the two easement holders, and I also understand that one of the easement holders is seeking judicial intervention or potentially is doing so. That is the correct forum for that. The Planning Commission is not the place to be discussing or deciding property rights. So I'd encourage you simply to say along the lines of, "We're figuring it out," and I think that's sufficient for answering the commissioner's question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions to the team on architecture and planning or whatever, we're here.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to be heard on this matter? I have two cards. Doug Felbinger, maybe I'm chopping that.
All right. It's been a long night. My name's Doug Felbinger. I own the property to the west of the subject. I am the dominant tenement in an access easement on the west side of the subject project. In 1988, my dad and the school district negotiated the current access easement. At that time, the school district owned both pieces of property, and we were on a ground lease. The easement runs with the land and is not only for my current project today, but it also benefits all future owners of my property and their projects. The servient tenement, the subject project, must continue to allow my use of the easement, which has been in place and remained unchanged for nearly 40 years. The access easement is much larger than the roadway. When my property is redeveloped, future owners are entitled to place an access road anywhere within the access easement, free of obstruction from the servient's tenement, servient tenement's property. My buildings were constructed on the property line. Everything to the east of the buildings was built on the access easement, which was originally there to service our second phase but was never built. The configuration was authorized by both the city and the school district. But so there wouldn't be any doubts, in 2017, as part of my purchase of the land from the school district, I negotiated an amendment to the easement expressly allowing all my encroachments onto the easement. This right runs with the land and is for the benefit of all future owners of my property. Earlier this week, I emailed Sean Gibson, well, actually, this doesn't apply since you added the supplemental, so, but both Sean Gibson and the city attorney have said this disagreement about easement is a civil dispute between neighbors, and the city will not get involved. But far from being a neutral third party, the city has actually incited this dispute. In a meeting this morning with Mike and his attorney, we found out that the city, it was the city that required Mike to include my encroachments in his project, even though he has no legal authority to include them. It was the city that approached Mike and said they want a freeway sign for the auto center in my easement area. Once I asked too many questions about the freeway signage, Sean Gibson stopped responding to my emails. You may reasonably ask, why would the city coerce Mike into invading my encroachments? The answer is to give them a precedent and a pretense for putting the auto center freeway sign in my planter. But why would the city coerce Mike into showing a monument sign location in his documents without showing any specifics about the signage? Could it be to wait for Mike to be in the middle of his construction, so he's over a barrel in any sort of negotiation? If the monument sign is not a part of the CUP, it should not be on the plans. This is a disgrace. I don't believe the commissioners or the city council are aware of this, of what's going on. Based on information I have, I believe it comes from within the bureaucracy. We depend on our elected representatives and their appointees on this commission to defend the public against this kind of behavior. I'm opposed to the project as presented.
Thank you. Next one is Pooja Nair.
I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
You got it, you got it right. Good evening. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Pooja Nair. I'm a real estate litigation partner with Irvine, Cohen, and Jessup in Beverly Hills, California, and I actually grew up in Thousand Oaks, just down the street. There are two grounds for our opposition, based on my client's property rights as the owner of the dominant tenement. My client has, my client, Cochrane Properties, has a recorded easement and an amendment that runs with his land. That easement provides that dominant tenement with rights over the access easement. And this is a permanent perpetual right imposed on the owner of the servient tenement, which is the applicant, to benefit the dominant tenement, my client. I understand that the city attorney and city staff have taken the position that this is a private matter to be, to be essentially agreed upon and/or to be determined in a judicial forum. But the issue here is that by granting a conditional use permit that runs with the land, the commission would be taking a position that the rights in the easement that my client is asserting are not valid, and taking the position of the, of the applicant over the position of the opponent here. The access easement is a, is a recorded document. Both the original 1988 access easement and the 2017 easement were recorded documents that reflect the permanent perpetual property right that runs with the land. The access easement allows my client to construct a roadway anywhere in the easement for access, and it's not limited to the current location of the roadway. With the idea that if, if future development takes place, that, that access easement and anything as specified in the easement, that entire land could be used to construct a roadway for access. The Heath versus Kettenhoofen case, which is 236 Cal App 2D 197, makes clear that the owner of a dominant tenement isn't limited only to where a roadway is constructed, but if an access easement and roadway easement is broad enough, it can go over the entire easement and can be changed as construction changes. Given the limitations of time, the other argument is that the, the project plan explicitly calls for the removal of parking and landscaping encroachments that were the subject of the 2017 easement amendment. I've laid out that position in the January 14th and 20th letters that I believe were presented in the supplemental today, but essentially, the, if the conditional use permit is granted as submitted, this commission would be authorizing and permitting the applicant to, to remove encroachments for parking and, for, for parking and landscaping that are built into my client's 2017 easement amendment. The position that the, that the Planning Commission is not determining private property rights is inconsistent with what the conditional use permit actually allows the applicant to do. The, for the CUP to be granted would be a violation of my client's rights, and we would appeal it on an administrative level if, if needed. But the fact that the conditional use permit runs with the land and provides this right in the project to remove parking and landscaping that my client has the right to maintain in a recorded property right document is something that should be of great concern, and for that reason, we oppose, we oppose the project as submitted.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Hearing none. Are there any comments from staff regarding statements made during the public hearing?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'll just follow up with the last speaker's comments. If you would refer to supplemental staff report, I think it's the only one. In any event, there is a letter that's attached dated January 20th, where I respond to this particular attorney's viewpoint, and as I stated earlier verbally tonight, the Planning Commission is not a court. If the disputing property owners want to hash this out, then I suggest that they seek a judicial intervention in the matter. Until that happens, the Planning Commission can make a determination with regard to the application based upon the good faith representation, and I believe the applications are filed under oath by the applicant that he has the property rights to move forward with it. Ultimately, it is the real party in interest, meaning the applicant, that would defend and indemnify the city in any action. So it's really on his dime that he needs to make a decision whether or not to move forward with his application or not, and it's up to the Planning Commission to make a decision with regard to whether or not the application is sufficient. Happy to answer any questions on this particular matter, but again, the city is not a courtroom, and now there's the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments regarding statements made during the public hearing? If there's no further questions, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Are there any comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission? Oh, I'm sorry, we need to reopen the public hearing.
Civil engineer for the project. I understand the comment about the dispute between the property owners. I will just, wanted to state that we are showing all of the easements as recorded in the title report. They're recorded on the tenant, or the final track map, they're shown on the tentative map. We're showing them on our current project, and we are allowing for the non-exclusive easement for access and parking and all of the same rights that they had previously. So that, in terms of legally what's in the title report, what's been recorded and what's shown, we believe we've, we've taken care of all of that, and we're showing all of it, so that we're in conformance with, with all of the easement rights that the adjacent property has.
Thank you. Nothing else for the applicant, from the applicant? Thank you. If there's no further questions, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Are there any comments or questions from members of the Planning Commission? Who wants to start?
Well, it's a compatible land use, definitely. I mean, it's very similar, and it's not visible from the street, and the traffic is, you know, it meets all acceptable standards, so.
Okay, I'll go. Notwithstanding the dispute of the easement, I think our city attorney answered the question very well, which is, anything that is done at this point in time, certainly they can seek judicial review, and some court may eventually make a decision as to who is right and who's wrong, but that has no bearing on us, that if the project meets all the requirements, the fact that the two parties have an argument, that is truly as I see it between them, the building seems to meet all the criteria that the city requires. I think it's a beautiful building. PK Architects have done another great job, so fundamentally, I have no issue with it whatsoever. I think it's a great project.
Thank you.
I like everything that's been presented. I just hope to get this easement dispute taken care of.
Hate to be the last one to speak. This makes me uncomfortable that you guys haven't been able to come to a resolution on, on this aspect of this project continuing forward. I just, I, I think you're gonna be neighbors for quite some time, or future neighbors. I'd like to see you get this resolved. Let's, let's work it out.
Just so that you're not the last one to speak. I also like the project. I hate seeing the, the non-agreement on it. I really, I feel like both sides are very passionate about that, and, and I just can't, we can't discuss it, otherwise I would discuss it to death, but that's, that's not my position here. I can't do it, otherwise I'm gonna get slapped. So I also like the project. I hate the disagreement, like, commissionarily. I really wish that, maybe not us, but maybe the city can help and find a way to, to, for you guys to agree on, on everything, or anything. Thank you.
May I please have a reading of the resolution? Resolution number SVPC 03-2025. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley approving a conditional use permit, CUPS 2023-0011, to construct a 24,290 square foot industrial building with accompanying outdoor storage on a 3.84 acre parcel north of 875 Cochrane Street and approximately 600 feet west of First Street, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The chair will now entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution approving CUP-S-2023-0011.
A motion was made by Commissioner Tolson. May I have a second?
Second.
A second? Okay. Call for the vote. Motion passes. The appeal period for the CUPS 2023-0011 is 14 calendar days. I found it. This is the ti, oh, we need to move into the new business, right? We're gonna move to the new business. This is the time and place set for a public hearing on the consideration of CUPS 2024-0007 and the determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Are there any ex parte communications to report? May we have an oral report on this matter by staff?
Yes, Chairman Chris, Chairperson Chrisman, this is a conditional use permit request by Venice Health Simi Valley Hospital for a much-needed upgrade to their central utility plant building and to add some additional emergency backup generators. Our associate planner, Neil Morissette, is here for the presentation.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Tonight, we will, we will be reviewing a request for a conditional use permit modification for the Simi Valley Hospital campus. Modification will include the construction of a new central utility plant building and yard with three emergency backup generators. Though three generators are being proposed as part of this request, only two will be initially installed, with this third installed at a later date. The proposed project site is primarily located on the existing southwest parking lot at the west end of Jones Way, with residential to the south and medical office buildings to the east. The parking lot consists of 157 parking spaces covered by three solar carports. The project will eliminate 36 parking spaces and one solar carport to accommodate for the new building, generator yard, and additional landscaping. The hospital campus will continue to meet its parking requirement with 451 total parking spaces. The proposed utility plant will consist of a new 1,880 square foot building that will house an emergency and main electrical room, a new 5,287 square foot open generator yard that will house three emergency backup generators, a fuel tank to supply 72 hours of fuel for the generators, and other equipment. The proposed building will be approximately 19 feet in height, will be constructed of CMU blocks in shades of brown and gray. The attached generator yard will have 12-foot, 4-inch-tall walls constructed of brown CMU block and dark composite fence panels. The walls will screen a majority of the new generators- The walls will screen a majority of the new generators with a stepped metal screen wall painted screened wall painted to match the generator's acoustical enclosure, which will screen the top portions of the generators. Landscaping will be installed on all four sides to assist with screening of any new Noise levels were analyzed based on the scenario of two of three generators being operated at one time, with the third generator serving as a backup. The project's anticipated noise levels would not exceed the general plan noise standards at the adjacent residences of 45 dB A for the interior or 63 dB A for the exterior. The two generators being installed will be tested simultaneously for 40 minutes once a month at 5:00 AM. It will be done at this time to avoid any disturbance to early morning surgeries and procedures at the hospital. Pursuant to a tree report that was prepared for the project, there are 34 trees existing within the area of work on site, 21 of which are protected trees, none of which are oak trees. Seven trees will be removed as part of the project and have a replacement value of $11,450.40. The conditions of approval for the project will require mitigation of the tree removal by the planting of new trees on site. The applicant proposes a mitigation planting value of $19,350,000 to be planted on site. The project will also include a direct brewery utility run from the new building and yard to the existing hospital, and a new transformer and circuit breaker at the northeast corner of Avenue to Simi and Sycamore Drive. An easement will be granted by the property owners of the medical office building to the east to allow for the utility run. Staff recommends the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the proposed conditional use permit modification and the determination that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA.
Thank you. Any questions, staff?
Yeah, and I read that at the end of the report, the 5:00 AM run of the two generators. That would concern me if I was, you know, residents very close to that. Is that is that pretty much in stone with the hospital operating hours?
That's something you can definitely direct to the applicant, but I know that they've emphasized that timeframe, so it doesn't disrupt with any services. If they did it any later, there's a potential, when they do those testing, it puts all the power from the hospital onto the generators, and they don't want any complications for surgeries, procedures, and such, but you can definitely direct to the applicant.
Understand that one perfectly. I'm just thinking, maybe later in the evening after everything's shut down, maybe a better timeframe, but thank you.
Any other questions? We will open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Would the applicant like to present the project? Sasha King.
This is Mark Mitchellson from the hospital.
Good evening. So just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. Summarized everything. Just giving a little background to the project, we were able to apply for a hazard mitigation grant from FEMA, and which is going to be funding majority of the project, along with some funds from Adventist Health. It is one of those areas where our current generators are in a non-compliant area for the 2030 laws. So we're just trying to get a jump on everything to be able to get into a compliant space. Definitely want to make sure that with all the fires and other disasters potentially within Simi Valley in the area, that we remain a lifeline to the community. So this allows us to step chat for a very long time going forward. To the point of the generator concern, where we currently do our generator testing at 5:00 AM, and there's been no issues with our neighboring surroundings and houses as well. And also, just once again, our surgeries usually start about 7:00 AM. So if there is any issues with our generator testing failing, it gives us some time to be able to kind of recoup and mitigate those issues. Happy to answer any questions otherwise, though.
And from our acoustical report.
Can you come to the mic, please? Sorry, we can hear you.
And from our acoustical report, they demonstrated that the sound would be comparable to a refrigerator with 45 decibels. So and there was also testing done as a baseline, and at around that time, 5:00 AM, we're right around that 45 as it is now. So we don't believe it's a significant acoustical impact.
Thank you.
That report was prepared by our acoustical engineers. Can't be here tonight, but.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant other than that?
How big are these generators, either in both in size and output, like the size of a semi-truck or van?
Could you maybe click ahead to the, we have a isometric. So they're fully screened. So what what will be observed as you experience the site is that that fence around the yard, the open yard, and that fence height is the same height as the acoustical enclosure portion of the generator. And then there's a little bit of equipment just above the generator, and that's that smaller screened portion above, which is set back to give some relief to the mass. But anyway, they are in line with the existing building. So it's screened from the residence by the building. The tallest point of the generator is 18 foot four, while the building height is 18 foot eight. So fully screened that way, and the mass of the project lines up with the existing MOB. And what's currently in that parking is covered solar panel parking, which is 16-foot height already. So this is, you know, another two feet. So it's, it fits in well with the surroundings.
I think he was asking how how big is that little battery right there?
The length of it?
Yes.
Hmm, I I would have to guess at this point. I don't recall exactly. 25 feet, maybe?
I think staff is looking at the exhibit to see the dimension on that. It's quite large.
Like the size of a semi-truck?
Amen.
Yes.
Yeah, I guess that that would work.
Okay. Oh, shipping container, good one. That that makes sense. So back to the noise thing. So reading the acoustical thing, so when they did these reports, were they testing or were they were they doing the sound at the property line, at the generator itself, inside the enclosure? When it says interior, exterior, what is the interior, what's the exterior reading based on?
The exterior, I believe, is referring to the staff or the city adopted. Our report should, our generators will never go over 45, which is, that's the interior. There were baseline readings done, which we're already at the 45 point now, so this isn't a significant impact to what is already.
What are they, sorry, are they testing, when they're, when you're testing sound, you have a monitor of some kind? Are they actually testing it next to the generator? Are they testing it at the property line? Where are they getting the the reading of 45 decibels at?
45 would be at the property line when the generator is in operation.
Okay.
So the south property line specifically where the residents are.
Got it.
Any other questions for the applicant? Is there anyone? Thank you. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to be heard on this matter? Can you, sir, please come up and state your name and residence?
My name is Otto.
If you can fill out the speaker card, someone, after, after, yeah, thank you.
My name is Otto Faboda. I'm a neighbor living on Nicholas Street, just one block from Jones Way. And my concern is acoustics, and but mostly my concern is the exhaust, because pretty much since COVID time, the generators that they have these semi-truck generators that they've had over there, it made an exhaust that it just makes it impossible to walk our dogs on our street and breathe without feeling like we're compromising our health. So the exhaust is what I'm very concerned about. And we've had, I mean, there's, I don't know if there's any correlation with that, but we've had neighbors that have died of cancer. We've had five of them in the last 10 years. And I'm just very concerned with the exhaust. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Are there any comments from staff regarding statements made during the public hearing?
We'd recommend directing the, maybe those comments to the applicant to to respond about the exhaust.
Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments regarding statements made during the public hearing?
I want to emphasize that there are two generators currently at the hospital. So this is a proposal for a replacement of those two. The third is strictly redundant as a backup. So in that regard, there's not an additional load that we're trying to place here. The hospital is trying to use the FEMA funds that they have been granted to make significant
My name is Brian George, and I am with, excuse me, with the Office of Design and Construction for Adventist Health. And just in responding to the exhaust issue at the moment, we are subject to the Ventura County Air Quality Management rules that are applied to us. And as they, we have been meeting these all along with the current ones that we have. There are stringent levels that need to be met through recirculation, et cetera, and things like that. And we're going to follow all the codes necessary to meet the air quality standards. We have successfully in the past, and we will continue to do so in the future, generators.
Thank you. Is there any any data or studies done on the exhaust that they're currently?
The manufacturer provides the output provided, and we, in order to get this, we had to provide that information to the air quality district for them to approve it, and they have approved it.
If you had to guess, do you think it would drastically change?
No, it will not. If not, it would probably even better, because these are newer units.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Are the current generators that you have, that you're replacing, these with in the same place now?
Excuse me, no, they are not. They are currently located on the other side of the hospital. They are located within a seismic, non-compliant seismic building. And that is the whole reason that we are doing this project, is in order to meet the Senate Bill 1953 standards that have been placed on the hospitals in California, our essential services have to be in buildings that will meet the earthquake standards that are designed for 2030. This building is currently, it's in, will not meet that standard. So therefore, we were fortunate that FEMA offered hazard mitigation funds. We applied for it, met the criteria, and through a shared financial responsibility, we are now going to relocate these to a safer seismic compliant area that will enable us to maintain our services in the event of a seismic event or a fire of some sort.
So on that map there, if you could, where are the current generators at? We could boost you up if you need to. Well, they're moving south and west.
Yeah, they're going to move over there, correct.
And, sir, that Nicholas Way, that's, they're moving them closer to your house.
Yeah, well, I, when I.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, I'm just kind of asking.
Clear all this up, too.
No, no, sorry.
We're trying to figure out where this exhaust is coming from. So when I went to investigate it, I thought there were semi trucks parked over here.
And you said that was during the COVID period of time?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be it. Yeah, and it's also that those type of generators are temporary.
Sorry, closer to the microphone, oh, sorry. Excuse me. Those generators are temporary, so they're not considered a permanent installation that they, right, exactly. And not a permanent installation that the, I want to say AQ, the quality management required standards for our fixed site. Yeah. Because you're not, yeah, because you're not, you're not smelling it from the current one right now.
Okay. Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, they were going through the whole process. So you you have these generators already, these generators that you're moving, you're not.
We're not going to move the existing ones.
Okay.
Okay, we are installing new ones, which are better.
That's the clarification I wanted. California's new laws on diesel admission, they're going to be very, very clean.
Yes, very, it'll be clean burn.
You can't even buy a new motor home, California.
That's for sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
If there's no further questions, we will close the public testimony of the hearing. Any, are there any comments or questions from members of the planning commission? May I please have a reading of the resolution?
Resolution number SVPC 04-2025. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Simi Valley approving a conditional use permit modification, CUPS 2024-0007, to construct a new building and yard for a central utility plant for an existing hospital campus located at 2975 Sycamore Drive, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you. The chair will now entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution approving CUP-S-2024-0007.
A motion was made by Commissioner Tulsa. May I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Motion passes unanimously.
The appeal period for a CUPS 2024-007 is 14 calendar days. Oral communications is reports, does staff have anything to report?
Chairman Christman, members of the planning commission, we have a planning commission meeting scheduled for February 5th. We have a couple items, or at least one item for that evening.
Do, thank you. Do any commissioners have anything to report?
Yes. I would like, if it's possible, for staff to come back in the future and maybe explain some of the new bills that have passed. For example, Senate Bill 1211, which has to do with ADUs, and some of the others. That's all.
Thank you. Mobile home rent mediation board, does staff have anything to report?
No items tonight. We will have a report at the next meeting.
Tree Advisory Board, does staff have anything to report?
I will say that our Tree City USA application has been approved, and we expect to have a presentation in a couple months before the city council.
Thank you. This concludes the meeting of January 22nd, 2025. The next scheduled meeting will be February 5th, right? This meeting is adjourned. Yes.
Of course, of course, an authority.
Now.